I now call the Wednesday, September 11th meeting of the Kansas State Board of Education to order. We have kind of a short agenda today. We're going to start with item two, School Improvement, Letters Training for Teachers and Staff. Welcome, Dr. Ben Proctor. Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair. And short agenda, again, you've got somebody that can set you behind really quickly here up first. Not the goal, not the goal, and I don't think that will happen. And I saw that Dr. J. Scott is on the agenda later. I don't want to steal his thunder. His thing is the national day. However, I just got to lead off with this, and I'll let him get into the really good stuff for the day. But National Hot Cross Bun Day. And I don't, I didn't really know what that was. Maybe you know what that is. However, as a middle school principal, band, fifth grade band, always started that first concert. The name of that first song that they learned was Hot Cross Buns. And if you've ever heard that first time they get together and play, it is a, that, let's just say, they get better and better, but that's a starting point, Hot Cross Buns. Mr. Graverson always started with that one, and that's all I could think about this morning, so, was that band concert. So, always appreciate the time. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board, Dr. Watson. Love talking school improvements and just the work that we're doing and the vision that the board has led in all of this work. And want to give you an overview of a new opportunity that we're providing to our school districts across the state and go through some of those details with you this morning. Yes, ma'am, sorry, yes.
Can I ask a quick question before you get started? Can you go back a slide? How do you spell letters? And I ask because on our agenda, it says LTRS, and it is a registered trademark, right?
Correct.
Any more context you can give us about that group, just real quick?
As far as the, like, the acronym, or?
Sure, just, like, who is Letters? Is there a company behind the name?
With all of that. We work directly with Lexia, who is the company that would oversee all of our contract work with the Letters programming. So it consists of, and I'll kind of walk through the different programs that are available as well that we've been taking advantage of. And then we're going to talk about a new opportunity called a Letters Facilitator that could operate within a local district. So I'll get into that as we go, but I think that is the correct acronym.
It is. I noticed yesterday that some of, someone else's slides had the registered trademark on them, and I just wanted to get really clear about what Letters is and that we don't fall down and start thinking that it's a KSDE thing, because it sits completely outside of KSD, so I just wanted to clarify that since our notes and the things that we've seen this month don't exactly line up.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So as we, as we talk about literacy in Kansas, and we know we have a Letters Initiative and have been operating that for quite some time, we kind of use the school improvement model that you've seen many times as a way to frame that work, and not only frame the work that we want to do around literacy and some of these other fundamental areas, but also it really frames the way we support the work and the resources that we provide. And you received an update from our assessment team, from KU, on balanced assessment yesterday, just as an example of the types of supports and resources that operate within this framing of school improvement in Kansas that you've been working on now for months and months through our accreditation model, but really creates a starting point for that. And as we've been sharing this model, I know there are a lot of questions from the state board about how do I use this, or where would I start? And I think the big takeaway, I told Dr. Watson a couple of days ago, after lots of different opportunities to meet with system leaders across the state, they're not having trouble finding that. And I think that's the big takeaway for me, is they're finding where they want to be within this model very, very quickly. To the point, many are saying, we don't want to wait until our School Improvement Day. We're ready now. We understand it, and we know where we need to be. And so that's, that's been a very encouraging conversation. So just to, Ms. Haas, just to kind of get into some of those things that we've been providing through our Letters Initiative, and will continue to provide for the next several years, Letters Training for Educators across the state. Dr. Watson shared all of those that are eligible to receive that training, and that's going well. It has been going well. And again, as we're out and about talking to people, we see more and more school system leaders who are committing to that work, knowing that it's very challenging. It's, it's, it's an investment. It's an investment of time, resources, all those things. But it is one of the most important things that we can do when we think about building knowledge for our educators across the state. We also have Letters for Early Childhood, and Dr. Watson said he's committing to Letters for Administrators. Several of us are going to commit to going through that, and that's a, it's a modified version for administrators who are overseeing the implementation of Letters in a building and provides that perspective. And it really gets into coherence building and just offers a number of different options depending on the individuals and their roles within a school district. So with that, a new opportunity that we're providing and communicating right now is to develop leadership, literacy leadership across the state so that we can stay very attached to this literacy focus. And we can sustain that. We can understand how to execute and implement the knowledge that we're building through the Letters programs. And so some of the goals of what we're offering are listed here, really about capacity building and sustainability and staying attached to structured literacy, building coherence, and really the execution side of what you'll see on that school improvement model. And so Dr. Curtis and her team have really put these things together that you're going to hear this morning, the goals, responsibilities, all the things that we want to see as we start to build capacity within our school systems to sustain this work. So the action, the primary action would be to train a local Letters facilitator. So we have some school districts across the state who already have people within their system who are authorized and trained to provide Letters training internally, where they wouldn't have to go through a service center or other training options. They would be able to do that within their staff and within their professional development time. As a former superintendent in a mid-sized district, we had made that commitment in my school system. So we had somebody trained within our school system who could provide that ongoing training and support and coaching and data analysis, all those things. We had a reading specialist who was able to provide all that within our system. Not everybody has that. And we feel like to sustain what we're doing around that knowledge building through the Letters initiatives, that is important. And so that's the opportunity that we want to provide while we have remaining Esser dollars. So we've identified this idea of developing a literacy leadership cadre or a team of individuals that would get trained in the facilitation of Letters within their local school district, but also be very attached to our literacy team here at KSDE to offer ongoing support in order to provide that sustainability as we think about the investment that's being made. So some of the responsibilities that go along with that, and we want to put out a good list of things for our school system leaders to understand, because it is a commitment. It is hard work. We know the regular Letters training is challenging work. Training a facilitator means that you're, you're investing even further in this work. And so we want to provide a list of qualifications or responsibilities that a Letters facilitator would need to have in order to sign up for that and go through that training. You can see those on the screen there. Some of it involves the teaching experience that you have, just the personality qualifications, the ability to organize and lead, and all those things that we know are important. So there's technical qualifications, but also as school system leaders are identifying potential facilitators within their system, our team has put together those qualifications that we believe are important. Now, sometimes superintendents say, I know somebody who's perfect for this role, but they don't have three years of teaching. Is that an option? And we're very hesitant to say that's an option, but we do talk to those people, and we want to make sure that we're responding when people say, you know, I know somebody who would be really good, but may not meet all of these qualifications. So just additional responsibilities or requirements or qualifications that we've identified that you can see here, just the ability to execute good professional development and lead large groups, not only internally, but potentially, as we develop that leadership cadre, you're working with a lot of high-level people across the state as well. So there is a time commitment and making sure that, one of the things that we all have to do is making sure that we're making good progress. So just because you sign up for something, especially when it's a two-year commitment, doesn't mean that everybody always follows through on those things. So that would be another example of a responsibility. There is annual training. It's called the Letter Symposium. That's virtual training that's provided just to make sure you keep your facilitator license up, that you would be able to train in an ongoing way. And there is a district expense, but it's only $200, so we feel like that's pretty manageable for that local district to be able to continue to provide that facilitator. And then just the connectedness with our early childhood team here at KSD, led by Dr. Curtis. And I feel like that's a huge benefit, being able to stay connected with that team. So our responsibilities at the State Department would be to continue funding Letters, continue or initiate funding for facilitator training as well. And I'll show you a breakdown of the size of the district and the number of facilitators that that district would be eligible for in just a moment. And then ultimately, our team wants to develop a leadership summit where we can bring these leaders together and really talk about how we sustain our efforts around literacy in Kansas and then make that a focus that doesn't go away. Responsibilities of the school district are also listed. These are what our ideas are going into this, knowing that it's new. But we want them to know the types of people, the types of individuals that we would be looking for as a facilitator, so they can be thinking about who would be the right person or team of people for them. And then we would estimate that there's about two hours involved per week, just to coach and mentor and be that instructional literacy leader within that school system, and then developing and administering professional development that would be associated with the training that they would receive. And we think that there's opportunities for those larger districts to be able to help support maybe those around them as well that maybe are smaller, that don't have as much capacity, as we think about helping all Kansas kids and building capacity for all across the state. So this is a quick breakdown of how we've organized our thinking around the number of local facilitators a school district will be eligible for. So any school district that has an overall enrollment of 500, up to 799, would have the ability to have one person trained. You can see as that enrollment increases, the number of trainers would also increase. And again, these are individuals that would be able to provide local Letters training for staff within that school district, and we would provide the funding for that training. The training itself, we're still getting clarification from Lexia, who oversees the Letters programming. But we believe that's about an eight-hour in-person training. I don't think there's additional virtual or online components of that. Dr. Curtis is getting me some information on that. We're still working out some of those details. Right now, we're asking for feedback from our school districts. We have met. Dr. Watson has led a series of Zooms, and we've hit almost every district that has at least 500 students or more on a Zoom to go over all of this information and provide them with some follow-up information. We've also sent out a survey to ask for interest and the number of potential people that any particular system would say they'd want to be trained. And I would say initial feedback is there's, there's heavy interest. Lots of people would like to take advantage of this, especially if they don't have their own trainers right now. So new opportunity, again, all about sustainability, capacity building, really staying attached to our focus on literacy in Kansas. I'd be happy to do my best to answer any questions that you have.
Board members, any questions for Dr. Proctor? Mr. Porter?
This really isn't a question. We talked yesterday during the, during the Commissioner's report about, about how people don't realize the efforts that we're making in literacy. What he told you yesterday, there was, there were a number of people that talked to him and said, what are you doing about reading? As if we hadn't been doing anything about reading. What he didn't tell you is that several of those people were legislators who should know better. And I'm very concerned about that, because whenever the recommendations from the task force were made, this board acted immediately and implemented every recommendation they made immediately. In that recommendation to the legislator was funding for training for college professors, training for current teachers, training for, not training, but not, not, not training for screening, but training, training for evaluation, which is, which is expensive. The legislature has done none of that. We also requested the funding for the, for Lori Curtis, Curtis's position, which they got around to after we funded it with Esser for a while, and then they finally got around to that after about four years. We have to do a better job of communicating what we have done. This is to us, and this is to the department. This is not directed at you, Ben. But we have to do a better job, because we have done everything that we have been asked, the board has done everything that we've been asked to do and taken extremely aggressive roles and putting, putting millions and millions of dollars in the process. And other people have taken credit. For instance, the Every Child Can Read Act was passed after several years by the legislature that actually put in law everything that we'd already done, plus some reporting, onerous reporting requirements. K-Board finally got on board. But, and then they all need to, and I appreciate everything that they've done. But the fact is that people are saying that we haven't done anything when we've taken the leadership role, and we need to make sure that we do a better job of communicating that, because I'm not sure, especially the legislators that should know better, are, I don't know what their motive is, because there's absolutely no reason that they don't know that the, that the State Board of Education and the Department of Education has taken this strong leadership role, aggressive leadership role, that nobody, and everybody else has come to the table late. And I think that we need to get credit for that, because we're being criticized for something that we have certainly not done. Okay, I'm through. Thank you.
Dennis.
Well, a little follow-up on what Jim just said. Can you give us a little idea? I'm a little foggy about the blueprint for literacy that's going on across the street. I mean, there's something that they're working on there that would maybe dovetail with that, with what? And then my second question is, Ben, maybe you can answer this right away, is small districts under 500, would they just be going to the service centers?
Great, great question. On the second question, yes, we would have that, that opportunity available to them through, through service centers or potentially through districts that's near them that may have their own facilitator internally. So we, we feel like sharing in some of that. It wouldn't be a requirement, but certainly something that we would encourage. So we'll take care of all districts, no matter what their size is. And I think that's the other thing that I'm learning, and maybe to your point, Mr. Porter, a little bit, while many have, have been doing this work for a long time, even prior to the state board taking action, when the state board did take action, a lot more started moving in that direction. And I, we even still talk to some who I think they, they maybe weren't as informed, and they're starting to see, and we talked about this a little bit this morning, which is within a team, this isn't going away. And I think some are getting that impression, I need to learn more. And some of those districts are now totally committed. And I think that's, that's through those efforts that the state board has taken. We will provide a, we're working on a very thorough initial update on the blueprint work that we'll be providing. Some of that is going to be through formal communication from, coming from the blueprint team itself. But a lot of that is focused on the complementing nature of higher education with what the state board has been doing now for a number of years. And want to reiterate that we would make available that Letters training for higher education faculty as well. We feel like that's really critical as we build coherence and, and all of those different pieces, whether it's the legislature, whether it's higher education, our, our pre-K through 12 system, we all have to be moving in the same direction on all of that for it to work and ultimately impact kids in the greatest way possible. So I think it's an effort to do that. I think Dr. Lane's leadership is moving us in that direction, and we'll be providing more information very soon. We've had a series of meetings, but I think now there's, there's things that are starting to come out of that through different committees within the blueprint work. So we'll be providing the board with a thorough update on that.
Anne.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Ben. And I think, again, to Jim's point, we have a real opportunity now, because in November, every seat in the legislature is up for election. And we know we're going to have two new education chairs, because the old ones are not going to be there. So I really think, and I mentioned this to Randy, we ought to prepare a document about what we've done in literacy, kind of a short one that just summarizes how we started in 2019, we did the funding, all the things we've done, and then give them a copy of our framework, so they understand we have a framework for literacy, blueprints, higher ed, framework is K-12, and lay that out for them. Because if you're not on the education committee, you don't hear about literacy. I mean, you know, you've got 20 or 30 legislators total who are on those committees. The rest of them don't have a clue. So this would be a good opportunity, because they're all turning over, to get a document in everybody's hand that talks, because this is a hot topic, just say, you know, we know this is a hot topic for everybody. We want to just bring you up to speed on what we've done and where we're going and what our plans are for K-12. And just take this opportunity to do that. Whoever, who's our communications? You guys, whoever that is.
Communications Committee?
And Denise.
And Denise, yeah.
Yeah.
Kathy.
I just wanted to kind of add in with, for the blueprint part, that I know Dr. Lane, and I know the committee itself, or whatever they're calling it, has met a couple of times, and Dr. Lyon has stepped into that, which is amazing. But Dr. Lane and I'm sure others are going to be at Fort Hays this next Thursday. So I'm assuming they're going around to all of the higher ed places and, you know, just continuing to pull in and work together with everybody. So I'm looking forward to stepping into that next week and seeing some part of what they're doing. But just, yeah, there is a lot going on with that to keep things moving.
I don't see any other questions. Last call. Danny?
Yeah, thank, thank you. So I want to make sure I get this clear in my head. So, so the Esser money is paying for all the training to all the teachers and stuff, and then the Esser money is paying bonuses to the people, the trainers? Because if they're going to be a trainer to the, to the local, their local district, they're going to be paid a stipend for being a trainer?
We wouldn't pay them a stipend. We would pay for the training itself, just like we've done for Letters. Local districts are making those types of decisions, and that's going to vary by district. But we're, as part of just the collaboration that we're doing, we're hearing districts talk to one another about the incentives that they're providing. But that would be a local decision. We would provide the cost of the training itself. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Proctor. Our next item is number three, Act on Higher Education Standards for World Languages. Welcome, Dr. Catherine Schmidling.
Much shorter. There we go. Is it sharing the right thing? User error. I hope it's sharing the right thing. There we go. All right. Thank you very much for letting me come before you today. I have for you the World Language Educator Preparation Standards. Oh, I can be louder. Make sure you are good. Okay, all right. Madam Chair, Commissioner, members of the board, thank you very much. I have for you an action item today, looking at the Educator Preparation World Language Standards. Just a reminder, if I can make it go. There we go. The preparation standards are used by all of the higher eds to design their programs and to define what that just qualified program completer should know and be able to do. should know and be able to do by the time they finish that program. So all of the higher eds use it to design and monitor their programs, and it's also used as part of looking at programs from out of state. There are two types of standards. There are the professional ed standards that you looked at some years ago and adopted, and then there are standards for every license and endorsement area. And those are revised as each field requests or on a seven-year timeline, whichever comes first. So I have for you today, Carrie Haber will be joining us online as she is able as soon as her class lets out, and then Luann Barron and Dr. Petra Horn Marsh from the World Language Committee to tell you about the overall changes made to those standards. I will turn it over to them. This works. This works. Thank you. We're good. We're good. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Luann Barron. I am Superintendent for the School for the Deaf in Olathe. And I am here to share some similar remarks I did last month. However, this month is Deaf Awareness Month and International Sign Celebration for this week as well. So I would like to mention, as far as the world languages, they have added ASL to the world language recognition. So any spoken world language, French, German, what have you. So we will ask for your vote to approve all of these things as it applies to ASL as a world language. So basically, what the changes are to the world languages is ASL terminology, native speakers, and that will be labeled as a signer, native signers. Finger reading instead of finger spelling. That's the receptive version of the expressive of finger spelling. And then oral, instead of being spoken, it will be signed. And as you know, sign language does not have a written form. It is a visual form. So when you see references to published works, we will be speaking about video works. And anything written, text, will add published signs. And then at the end, there's a nice glossary that we have added to clarify some of the terminology for those who might not be familiar with ASL as a world language with a heavy emphasis on spoken and written. Again, we will add the component of it being a visual language. Also, you know, today, for the world languages, it's also added in ASL is all encompassing. So structure, linguistics, ASL has its own grammar, phone names, rules, syntax. It has all of those components of a language, which makes it very unique in the fact that it is visual and not written. So we would certainly appreciate your support in voting for ASL as a world language. Thank you for your time this morning. And this is Dr. Petra Horn Marsh saying, good morning, everyone. I'm certainly happy to be in front of you again today. What Luann had just mentioned is certainly very important because ASL is a distinct language. And within Kansas, we have several schools that we have students that are in high demand to take this course. And there's a lot of seeking as to where they can actually take these classes. And so most of the time, the people that they bring onboard to teach these classes are not qualified. They don't have theory of teaching or methodology or child development as a second language, and that being the key. Kansas School for the Deaf has students who are learning ASL as their first language, which is a different emphasis. So here we're looking at teachers who are teaching this as a second language. So often, this ends up being taught in spoken English, and the actual signed teaching is much less emphasized. Therefore, the students who are taking these classes don't have the proficiency. You're talking about programs such as Johnson County Community College or KU Edwards Campus. If they go in and take a proficiency exam, they do not pass it. And so it's very much a waste of their time, their educational time. In high school, if they take ASL, one, two, three, sometimes four, they have to take it all over again because they don't have the all encompassing language and the signs, the vocabulary, that foundation. It's not just signs. You know, it's so much more involved in that. It's complex. There's a number system. There's facial expressions, non-manual markers, spatial use, classifier use. All of these components go into the American Sign Language. And so you need a highly qualified instructor, just as you would with any other spoken foreign language. ACTFOL, the Organization for Foreign Language, has always been involved, been an involved member of these languages. And they have five Cs that go through ASL Instructors Association. And so there's a huge presence at the national level, the ASLTA. And so Kansas truly needs to become on par with those other foreign languages as it is nationwide. So we ask for your consideration, and it is a crucial vote. Please pass ASL licensure for those teachers to be highly qualified. Thank you for your time this morning.
I think we have Carrie Haber just joining us on Zoom. And Carrie, if you're there and want to give a quick summary of some of the world languages changes? Is she, can we hear her now? All right. So Carrie, if you're available and can give a quick summary of the updates made to the world languages standards, we should be able to hear you.
Sorry, sorry. I couldn't hear you guys for a while, so my apologies. So we have just updated language, made sure that everything is very consistent, make sure that it includes all languages that are taught, commonly taught languages that have been taught for years, ASL, of course, and any languages that we might teach in the future as well. We wanted those, the wording of the standards to be very consistent for the programs at the higher eds so that they would find it easy and clear to know what they're assessing their candidates on. And then also, of course, as always, because ACTFOL, which is the American Council on the Teaching of Foreign Languages, has devised or they're sort of the umbrella organization for standards for languages in the United States. We wanted to be consistent with their language as well because frankly, a lot of the assessment is tied to the ACTFOL wording of things. So we've used that in Kansas for years, and so we wanted to continue to be really consistent with that. And were there any questions I could answer?
I think we have a few. Betty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I actually don't have a question. I'm excited about including this, and I am prepared to make a motion whenever you want to receive it.
You can go ahead and make the motion, and we can get a second and continue discussion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the new educator preparation program standards for world languages pre-K through 12.
Is there a second, Dina? Further discussion? I've got Ann's hand up. If you want to go next, Ann?
Thank you. Katherine, a couple of things. I know we've been kind of raked over the coals because some schools are already teaching ASL, and they're not doing it with qualified teachers. So as a result of this, will they have to stop teaching it? Or will those teachers be made? I mean, right now, I mean, do we even have colleges that are capable of training people in this?
We do have colleges that could begin preparing teachers. I was watching you.
Gallaudet University does have a Masters of ASL Education degree program, and there's a very, very strong program. One issue is the licensure. There needs to be a licensure added. So, but they are well-trained teachers, and they're well-versed as in curriculum, instruction, and assessment, and how to approach each of those. Once they pass that, then they will be connected to, go on to graduate, and they will take their board's exams and then get their licensure. I know Columbia University, also in New York, also has a program. So those two, right off the top of my head, I know are good, strong, solid programs. We will need to probably take some time to develop programs in other universities, not just on the East Coast, but here in the Midwest and also on the West Coast. So very good question. Thank you for the question. But will those teachers immediately stop teaching? No, we will come alongside them. We will support them. We will give them in-service and trainings to help guide them to advance their skill sets.
Do we know if any Kansas universities have even expressed an interest in using the standards we're developing and going forward with the program?
And this is Dr. Petra speaking, yes. Our program is very, very, very interested. Because of our program, we have ASL desk studies, and that is at the University of Kansas Edwards Campus at KU. We house that program, so we are very, very interested in taking that on.
Okay. So I'm just trying to figure out what the real impact of this will be. I mean, we need to do it, and I'm happy we're doing it. But will we get the word out that you really need to take training if you're going to teach ASL?
We will send this out to all of the universities and invite them to submit programs that would be reviewed and then come to you for program approval. All of the school districts, they make local decisions on who they hire. But until now, there hasn't been a license to have as an ideal, and now there would be. So they could still hire who they wanted, but now we can at least say, well, there is a license. Does your person have that?
Well, there is license, but not offered in Kansas. I mean, unless they went to Columbia or Gallaudet.
Or we've had a few folks acquire it through the restricted license route if they are a native signer. And then they pick up the education theory and methods and then get their license that way.
Okay, great. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Katherine? Yes, I'm, be wrong. Has WSU not started an ASL program now?
And this is Dr. Petra saying, they just started. They are in their first semester currently. So they have just started, and those instructors will be joining our task force. So we will be meeting with them for the first time, and we will go from there.
From the high school perspective, so we did have teachers who taught ASL with us here at Derby High School. Unfortunately, they moved on to other schools and to other subject matters. They were not, of course, licensed in Kansas because they, at the time, could not be. But I think that as far as like interest, there is a huge amount of interest in high schools for ASL programs, and I think that they will build. I'm very optimistic about that.
Absolutely. Yes, agreed. And this is Dr. Petra, want to add for you, Carrie, and for the board as well. In Olathe, we have 200 students enrolled in ASL 1 through 3 at the high school level and is taught by one instructor.
Wow.
Yes, yes, 200 is a high demand, high demand. And the enrollment numbers are showing it.
So I was going to reiterate the same thing I've said previously. I'm hearing from students that they want this, and so I'm glad that we're making progress on it. But Katherine, I want to go back to Ann's question. So with the new license, at what point will we be telling schools, if you don't have someone who's licensed, you can no longer teach?
Yeah. Madam Chair, I'm going to step in on that question real quick. So currently, what we require is any teaching license with verifiable training. So what's ended up happening, a lot of individuals that may have been interpreters or have a degree in this particular area have ended up serving as a teacher. So the steps that you take today has created an opportunity for us to develop a program. So Katherine mentioned restricted license. Our first impact is going to be, and I'm working with candidates right now that have completed ASL programs and are looking for licensure. So they're going to transition into the restricted teaching license. So it is going to force people to get a actual teaching license with that endorsement added in. With this being created for individuals that already have those skills and that are licensed and have met that requirement, maybe they've had the training. So they can move forward with taking the ASL proficiency language assessment and then adding that endorsement to their license. But the bottom line, what you've done here today, it is going to force districts to ensure that that person has training and has an endorsement to a teaching license.
Can I ask a follow-up question then? For our native ASL speakers. Do you feel that, we had a previous conversation about after-school ASL clubs and that the different types of ASL that are being taught in those clubs can be confusing? However, is it still useful for, say, a middle or high school student to be learning some form of ASL, even if they're just learning that vocabulary and maybe just in a club setting? Would you endorse that? Or would you recommend that they only be learning ASL from a certified, from a licensed instructor?
And this is Dr. Petra. Good question. ASL clubs, truly, honestly, the spirit of that environment is more activity-based, more socialization, possibly even some kind of outing within the deaf community to participate, to experience, and get exposure to the deaf community. But to formally teach and learn the signs, I think it particularly needs to stay within the classroom setting. For club activities, you know, it could be something to acquire new experiences, new vocabulary, sure. And I can see a time and place for that. But truly, it's more of an extracurricular activity in that club setting. And that should continue, absolutely. We're in full support of that. At the university, we've just established last May some opportunities that have been really exciting as we're moving forward because they're extracurricular opportunities. And this is Superintendent Barron. And I, another, just like any other foreign language, the formal type of instruction needs to take place in the classroom setting because you've got to know the fundamentals. You've got to know the structure of the language. In a club setting, it's more of informal, social type of an interaction and kind of more of that casual language learning environment. But for the formal instruction of language to, with the goal to use this within their career, to use ASL maybe to become an interpreter, it's a more formalized process. So there is a difference, but there is a place for both. And this is Dr. Petra saying, you know, in addition, we see a huge gain and benefit of those people who learn sign and become teachers later on. And they could maybe stay here in Kansas to become those teachers, those social workers, those doctors, and even law enforcement, firefighters, hospitals, first responders, and of the like. There's a huge benefit for them and for the sake of the deaf and hard of hearing community. And Dr. Barron says, not only for that, but just as professionals. You know, my son, who is a dentist, and, you know, he now has a lot of deaf patients that come to him because there is that direct communication opportunity. And, you know, can you imagine being able to speak directly with your provider? And so that is a huge plus, a huge benefit for the deaf and hard of hearing community. And that could be in any, any career, any occupation. You know, legal, medical, dental, you name it.
Thank you so much for those responses. I don't see any more questions. Board members, are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand. Opposed? I don't see any. That is a 10-0 unanimous vote. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Barron. We heard from the students with the Kansas Future Teacher Academy yesterday and would sure love to see some students from KSD becoming part of that academy and becoming teachers. So thank you so much for your comments. All right. Board members, we will take a break. 10 minutes back at 9:55. 10 minutes back at 9:55. We are ready for item, excuse me, number four on our agenda today. Act on redeterminations for conditionally accredited school systems. Welcome, Dr. Jay Scott.
All right. Thank you so much. Good morning to the board. Dr. Watson, thank you so much for the time. So it was a good thing that Ben stopped by and saw me after he spoke with the board this morning because he shared what we're celebrating today, right? But there's not just one thing we're celebrating. So the other one is it's National Make Your Bed Day today. So how many of you celebrated that this morning? I see one hand. I see two hands, three hands. That's not... I was going to say, do you make your bed in a hotel room?
Dr. Jay. We've got to give the motel people something to do.
Oh, okay, yeah. Of course. So they're celebrating. This is their, yeah, it's day for them to celebrate. So, yes, multiple times. So it's also, it's a state holiday. It's the last round of KISA 1.0 votes, all right, action. So this has been a long time coming. I appreciate the board. As we've gone through this, we've been month after month for a couple of years now working through accreditation, which are really important decisions. So I appreciate the depth and the care that the board has taken with these types of votes. So, but I'm going to jump right in. This last round, we have nine systems that were receive, they were receive item in August. These nine systems were conditionally accredited in either 21, 22, or 22, 23, and they are now being redetermined. They're going through the redetermination process for an accreditation status. The ARC has reviewed all of these systems. All nine of these systems submitted their reports back to the ARC in terms of how they responded to the conditions. And so these are the systems up for action today. So I'll just read these off since there aren't that many of them. It's 205 Blue Stem Accredited Recommendation to be fully accredited, 282 West Elk Accredited, 291, 292 Grinnell-Wheatland. They share personnel, so they do this together. The recommendation is accredited. 334 Southern Cloud, the ARC has redetermined they to, they are recommending them to remain conditionally accredited. 399 Paradise Accredited, 403 Otis Bison Remain Conditionally Accredited, 462 Central of Burton Accredited, 465 Winfield Accredited, and Accelerated Schools of Overland Park Accredited. And you had all the materials for these systems in August. Had some time to review those, so happy to stand for any questions before there's action.
Board members, any questions? If not, we would be ready for a motion. Betty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Accreditation Review Council as presented here today.
Is there a second? Jim Porter? Any further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. That looks like a 10-0 unanimous vote. Motion passes.
Excellent.
Thank you.
It's a great way to celebrate. Thank you so much.
Jay, can you give an idea to the board on the two conditionally accredited systems when they may see that those systems come back?
Thanks for asking that. So from now on, what we want to do is every July, or summer, bring to the board every system, all 304 of our systems, with their recommended status for accreditation. Every July, we would do that. So by next July, we will have made the redetermination on Otis Bison and Southern Cloud. And so you would see the recommended status for both of those systems next July.
Kathy, sorry. Just remembered a question I did want to ask. How many overall are sitting in that status?
There are just those two now.
Completely?
Every, yes. There are only two systems right now that are currently conditionally accredited. The rest are all fully accredited.
So they'll start going through the new process?
Right. That's correct. But we will, excuse me, we will still bring every system to the board every summer. So you can see that these are the, this is the recommended status. October, I do want to tee up October. I'll come back with just an update of where we are with KISA. We're doing a lot of facilitator training, a lot of informational sessions. Kathy, thank you so much for being part of those days. And any other board members that have been able to join those, that have been really, really good days with talented educators. But I will also bring back an initial, our first draft of outcomes standards. So we've talked a lot about the compliance, school improvement outcomes. So in terms of setting standards in each of those three areas, we'll be bringing back in October to the State Board the first draft of outcome standards for you all to take a look at. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next item is number five. Act on nominations to the Professional Standards Board.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Ladies and gentlemen, the board, Commissioner Watson. Once again, thank you for allowing me to be here today. This is your warning for next month. So I've taken it easy on you. These last two months have had short things to present to you. Next month, that won't be the case. We'll spend a lot of time together next month. All right. So these are professional standards board nominations, and we've gone through these the last couple of months, but we will do a review before we get into the actual nominees. So as a reminder, there are statutes that govern the Professional Standards Board, its composition, and its responsibilities. So Statute 722309, that does create and establish the board and also lays out those qualifications for that, for individuals to serve on the board. The Statute 722312, that lays out the responsibilities and duties of the board. And those responsibilities are basically making recommendations to this body as far as anything that's related to teacher licensure or candidates going through the process to become licensed teachers. As I said, it includes pre-training and selection, educator preparation and admission, and staying in, continuing, renewing in the profession. The requirements for an individual to serve on the Professional Standards Board include that they're licensed and actively practicing in Kansas, they have five years of professional education experience, and they've been actively serving in the last three years. So for our vacant positions, we're down to two. One is a CTE, Career and Technical Ed, building-level administrator position. And then the second is a classroom teacher from a public school, and it is an at-large position, and that's what we're going to be voting on today, or you all will be taking action on today. This is a breakdown of our current Professional Standards Board. If you see a name that's highlighted in yellow, that means that individual won't be, their term's going to come to an end, and they won't be serving on the board. So on the far right-hand side, Ms. Libby Schmitz is our private public, or private school teacher. This is her second and final term, so we will have to find a replacement for her before the end of next year. If you see an individual that's highlighted in purple, that indicates that they're completing their first term, and they'll have the option to continue on with a second term, or if they choose... they choose, they could decide not to continue to serve. And if you have, if you see pink, that means the individual, or that position is vacant. And in the far right-hand side in pink, that is the position that we're filling today. All right. As far as our nominees, there were four. We have Ms. Candace Landers, who's an elementary teacher with Derby, Mr. Darnell Vargo, who's a middle school teacher with Riley, Dylan Graves, a high school teacher with Hutch, and Sarah Barley, who is a high school teacher with Salina. And when we move forward, as far as these nominees, you may have seen the recommended motion. It's in brackets. That means you're just going to select one person for that motion. So if it's convenient for you, I can stay on this slide and let you have your discussion.
Start with Betty.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I would like to make a motion. We do not have a representative from District Eight, and so I'm very happy to see Candace Landers. And I would like to go ahead and make the motion.
Okay. Can you pause for just a moment? Can you give me just?
Sure.
Go ahead and make your nomination.
Okay. I move that the Kansas State Board of Education act to appoint Candace Landers to serve on the Professional Standards Board, representing a public school classroom teacher at large position effective upon appointment through June 30th, 2027.
Okay. Is there a second? Okay. We can discuss. I've got.
Madam Chair.
Oh, we have a second from Jim. Okay. Discussion? Dennis, I have you next on the list. Did you want to?
Can I make a motion also, or is this discussion for this motion?
You can't make a motion. This is discussion for this motion. However, the board could vote this down if there's not agreement that this is the right nominee, and then you can make a new motion. Any discussion? Ann?
Well, I agree with Betty. I was looking at the list of who's on this thing, and actually, I think there was only one other person from eight on the entire board. So we really have a shortage of people from the Wichita metro area, and considering how big that district is, I'd support Candace.
Any other comments from the board, Dennis?
Well, I don't have any personal issues with any of this, except that I, when I look at the bios, I see experience, I see exposure, different classroom settings, and that's the reason why I will not vote. I mean, I have another nominee that I want to put forth. So that's my discussion on the issue.
Anyone else? Okay. We will vote on the motion on the table. All in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Motion passes, six to four.
All right. Thank you for your time.
And our next item is six. Act on recommendations from the Evaluation Review Committee, ERC, for higher education accreditation and program review. Welcome back, Dr. Schmidling.
You can't get rid of me today. That's the wrong one. There we go. I really can't make it go. Thank you for letting me come back. I have for you the Evaluation Review Committee's recommendations that you saw last month for higher ed accreditation and higher ed program approval. So just a reminder that for accreditation, it is a multi-step process. The institution, the EPP, we call them Educator Preparation Provider, writes a self-study with evidence. They give that to a trained accreditation team who gives feedback. The provider, the university, then writes an addendum with more information that they give to the team. And then the team interviews members of the faculty, the students, alumni, P-12 partners, faculty in other departments that work with education, other offices at the university. They write a final report. The university can reply to that report. And then all of those reports go to the Evaluation Review Committee. They make an initial recommendation. The university can then request a hearing to provide additional information. And once the ERC finalizes their recommendation, I bring it to you. There are four possible decisions. Fully accredited for seven years. Accreditation with stipulation for two years, meaning all standards are met, but one has a stipulation, a serious concern. Probationary accreditation when four standards are met and one is not met, and there is a serious concern, and not accredited. And either of those two-year accreditations are followed up by a second visit on strictly the standard of concern two years later. Just a reminder of the accreditation standards for higher ed. The first is content and pedagogical knowledge. The second is the partnership with those P-12 school districts and how those P-12s are involved in designing that clinical experience. The third is recruiting, tracking candidates through preparation to completion. The fourth is impact on the P-12 classroom. So reaching out to those program completers who are licensed in their preparation area. Did you feel prepared? Reaching out to their employers. Is your employee that you hired that we trained prepared? And collecting data that those completers have a positive impact on their P-12 classroom. And then the fifth is the quality assurance system, the continuous improvement effort that the educator provider has in place and how they monitor all of the license areas they offer. Just a reminder, areas for improvement are concerns within a standard, but usually do not lead to the standard being not met. They are an issue that needs to be addressed over the length of the next accreditation cycle. A stipulation is a more serious concern that could lead to a standard being not met, and that needs to be addressed within two years. So I have for you the Evaluation Review Committee's recommendations for Central Christian College of Kansas. They are recommending probationary accreditation for two years with a focused visit. Standards one, two, three, and five are recommended as met. Standard four, that monitoring of program impact from the completers and the employers is not met. There were no concerns for standards one and three, so that's content and tracking candidates. And then the stipulation is strictly for standard four. There were not stipulations in any other standard. So to go real quick through the areas for improvement, I'm going to skip to the rationale on each one because that's where the explanation is. So for standard two, for that clinical partnership, there is ongoing collaboration, but it needs to be consistently documented and be an ongoing process. So there's been a little difficulty keeping it going and documenting it. Also, for the partnership standard, for working with clinical educators, the team and the Evaluation Review Committee want to see more detail on how clinical educators, the cooperating teacher is selected, and then how they frame having a positive impact on candidates. So how do you know that that mentor teacher, that clinical instructor, is having a positive impact on the student teacher that they're working with?
Does this relate to placing an elementary beginning, or student teacher with a cooperating teacher that has training in structured literacy? Is that what you're telling me?
Or any other issue?
Okay. But that would be a specific thing that would be looked for.
The accreditation.
The answer needs to be yes, Kathy.
They look for all-around support for the candidate. All right. The clinical experience itself, they, the EPP is talking about having a plan for a more robust clinical experience, but again, the ERC wants to see that documented. All right. And then areas for improvement under standard four, so this is the smaller concern. Let me skip to the rationale. There was one year of data on satisfaction of employers, and the accreditation process requires three years of data. So there was insufficient data on that. And then satisfaction of the person who's been prepared, the completer who has graduated. And again, there was only one cycle of data with not a lot of analysis done. So the ERC wants to see more data on that. For the quality assurance system, standard five, again, they want to see ongoing evidence of implementation. So a plan has been presented. There was a plan last time. Yes.
Sorry. If I could, back on the one year instead of the three years, I'm assuming this is a smaller college.
It is very small. Yeah.
So is any of that, that they didn't graduate in possibly every year of those three years?
I think there were completers every year, and they are encouraged to aggregate that. I don't want to know one person's grade. So if you have to lump, we had one people, two people, one people, lump them all together, four people across three years. There were just some gaps in the data.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right. Looking at the quality assurance system, again, wanting to see that it's being implemented. There has been some turnover. As you know, when a new person comes in, sometimes it takes a while to get everything going again. Looking at the data quality component of the quality assurance system, not all of the tools that the preparer uses have reliability and validity analysis. So that needs to be done. Make sure that the tool is measuring what you want it to measure, and everybody using it is using it the same way. And then the stakeholder involvement component, there were agendas and minutes of committee meetings, but again, wanting to make sure that process is done consistently from year to year. And then the stipulation, so this is the serious concern that is causing standard four to be not met, is completer effectiveness. So knowing that that graduate who is out working under that license has a positive impact on their classroom. And there was limited evidence available, but not as much as the team and the Evaluation Review Committee wanted to see. So the ERC is recommending a focused visit on standard four addressing the areas for improvement and stipulations for standard four in fall of 2026. The options that you could assign, I mentioned at the beginning, accreditation, I'm sorry, the options after that visit in fall of '26 could either be full accreditation for five years. The ERC could recommend that that standard is now met, but we still need to check in in two years, or that accreditation be revoked. Their history, in 2018, there were no concerns for standards one through four. There was a concern for that quality assurance system, standard five, and that has been replaced by the area for improvement that I showed you earlier. So it's continued, which is, I think, why the ERC left it on there. And then moving on to the program approval, it is a very similar process, again, except at the license level program. And I have for you two new programs from Newman University. So both have been approved, both have begun operation, admitting candidates, and the ERC has reviewed that progress report. There were no concerns when either program was reviewed. The ERC is recommending to remove that new program stipulation. So this use of the word stipulation is not the same as the earlier stipulation. To remove that new program stipulation and extend program approval through June of 2026, all of the university's programs are being reviewed in spring of '26, and it goes into the continuing programs cycle. Do you have any questions?
I have questions. If I were a student, considering enrolling in one of these programs, I feel like I would want to know if somebody is on probationary status or potentially about stipulations. At this point, there's no way for me to find that out when I say go to their website and I'm looking around. It's not going to say that the State Board has not accredited, has not, I don't know how you would even word that exactly. I just feel like a student should know before they enroll that there, that there's room for improvement with this program, particularly on the effectiveness measure.
I think they do have to put it on their website under their accreditation status. So once you decide on that, they would need to update that. It also is part of the state's federal Title II report for higher ed, but that is reported a year behind. So I think they're required to post that.
And a prospective student would need to know to go and look there.
That it was there.
Okay. Dennis?
I just have one, just curious. When the two-year review comes around, what actually happens? I mean, they go to the campus, or they go to find the student in their working setting?
It will mostly be talking with the head of that education department. What have you done to make sure that you're reaching out to folks who have completed your program and collected data that they're having a positive impact? So the ERC did recommend, so I get back to it, a case study, which is what a lot of programs do, because in Kansas, we cannot share testing information to say such and such university, your graduate's classrooms in English got an average of whatever. Instead, they will reach out to their completers and say, hey, we want you to do an exercise in your classroom, teach a unit, and then assess something, teach a unit on it, assess it again, and then you can document for us that you've had a positive impact. And that is what the ERC is recommending. Other ways that that could be done is a focus group with those completers, those graduates, and their employers. Yeah, so-and-so, they came in and, you know, their classrooms always do really well, or, well, we've struggled with this, but it was because such and such. So they want richer data on that.
So it's really like a peer review in a lot of ways?
Yes.
I mean, there's people that are on site there, and they say, hey, this is working. She's doing a good job.
Yeah. It's very much all peer review. It will be held entirely virtually, but it will be, they'll write a self-study, you know, this is how we think we're addressing this. The team will look at it. Okay, I understand this. I don't understand this part. They give that formative report back. It's the exact same pattern as the full accreditation, but it's all about standard four.
Okay. Thank you, doctor.
Vice Chair Porter?
Just to follow up on Melanie's question, I wonder if anybody ever monitors to see if their accreditation status is actually on their websites? Because I wouldn't think to do that, you know?
I need to go in and make it part of my regular annual report process. I know when we partner with the Council for the Accreditation of Educator Preparation, that is part of the annual report follow-up, is making sure the status is correct on the website.
Any other questions, comments, and if not, ready for a motion? Betty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that, I move that the Kansas State Board of Education accept the recommendations of the Evaluation Review Committee for Educator Preparation Accreditation for Central Christian College and Program Approvals for Newman University.
Thank you. Sarah, second. Jim Porter? Further discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. That is a 10-0 unanimous vote. Is that what you got, Deborah?
Check.
All right. Thank you all. That brings us to the end of our action items to vote on today. So unless you desperately need a break, we'll just roll right into consent agenda. Okay. Was that a yes break or yes consent? All right. Let's get you to your long lunch. Yesterday, you approved the consent agenda as presented, or sorry, you approved the agenda as presented. Any discussion? And if not, I'll take a motion to vote. And if not, I'll take a motion to vote.
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second, Dina. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Eight to two. Motion passes. I'm not sure that I know any of you today. That was fun, doing the whole consent agenda together. There's always something, right? Next item is the Chair's report. I'm going to talk a little bit during committee reports about the Screen Time Blue Ribbon Task Force. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mark for comments from the Board Attorney.
I'll be brief. Just wanted to comment that our office is going through a new conversion on billing, and so I put in a prior email that I'm not going to duplicate the billing by preparing a monthly report. I'll just provide you with the detailed billing. And unfortunately, sometimes it doesn't get out to the Board before the actual meeting, just based on the timing of getting everything entered and out. But you can always ask me a question afterwards or at the next monthly meeting. Be happy to answer that. This is the time of year when I typically will make registration to go to the NASB conference where the NICOSIA, the attorneys from all the other state agencies attend. Unfortunately, I have a conflict this year, so for the first time in many years, I won't be able to go to this, but I may find another education-related conference to attend, either later this year or more likely in the spring of next year. That's always a good conference. It kind of ties into one of the other, kind of just high-level reports. I was going to just reference the fact that, you know, one of the things I do kind of behind the scenes is both work with Scott Gordon and with the agency to monitor from time to time some other litigation that might be relevant but isn't directly involving the Board in the sense that you're a party. But, for example, there's some statewide litigation involving Meta, but it's not something that has been initiated by the agency or the Board. But there's also, just learned that there's also some TikTok litigation, and those are the kind of things that you hear about and read about in the national publications. If I could draw an analogy, it might be, you know, the statewide, multi-state litigation involving societal concerns, maybe. So like, for example, in the 10 years plus ago, state tobacco litigation or the opioid litigation where the Attorney General brings actions on behalf of, or the, a particular state initiates it, and then multiple states get involved. And those are typically orchestrated and maintained by the state Attorney Generals, but it involves the agency and also, to a lesser degree, the Board because they always are asking for documents and records and information. And so, for example, there's been some recent rulings and Scott's managing, Scott Gordon is managing data requests and things like that. It is relevant, but it's so time-consuming and I don't want to get into the weeds with you. So I typically just kind of, you might see it on my report, but, for example, he shared with me an order that came out of California Federal Court that was 248 pages long that relates to the, what's referred to generically as the Meta litigation. And that is, has to do with social media, adolescent addictions. It's phrased as a personal injury and products liability litigation by many, many states across the country that are looking to Meta to reimburse states for the, just generically referred to as societal ills of those kinds of influences. Same thing with TikTok. And so if you want to know more, or I try to stay engaged in those things, but since it doesn't include the Board necessarily as a party, I don't always, you know, update you unless it involves you as a litigant in a particular piece of litigation. I still have some ongoing meetings on behalf of the School for the Deaf. We have a follow-up, Board Member Dombrowski and I, and Superintendent Barron and the HR manager have a follow-up on negotiations for the School for the Deaf on Monday. We thought we'd have like a memorandum of understanding to present to you for, you know, agreement for a one-year extension, but that's hit some speed bumps along the way, and we're going to continue to work through those. The contracts are, because the state statute dictates the compensation for the next-year employees, it doesn't hold up the contracts for the School for the Deaf. So we have some flexibility in terms of how the, which comes first, you know, the contracts or the negotiated agreement. So we're okay, we're just working through some rough patches in the negotiation process, but that's still ongoing, and we'll, you know, bring you some resolution when it's been achieved, but we still have some ongoing negotiations there. So that's my report, and I'm always happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mark? Kathy?
I guess I would add one, because you're saying Attorney Gordon is having to produce documentation?
Well, not produce. Respond and object, and, you know, there's always, there's a lot of times that they'll ask for information that's extremely broad, and, you know, typically the response of an agency is to try to narrow the scope and provide some kind of protection against that disclosure. And so just the discovery process itself is a long drawn out. But yes, in that litigation, there are some disputes over what can be produced and what must be produced by the agency.
So is Kansas a part of that somehow? Yes.
Yes, and the Attorney General is managing the request by Meta to produce certain information.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mark?
And I will just say, I do like the new billing system.
I would just say, as Mark said, that one area is potentially going to cause, it's already caused Scott to spend a lot of hours on it, but it's big potential, because you can think if a state, and this is multiple states suing Meta, Meta's not going to go, I mean, they have tons of lawyers, and they're saying that we have to produce all these records. Now, we haven't done that yet, but if that ends up happening, I mean, you're talking about hundreds of hours it's going to encompass. And one of the disputes, as Mark said, is stated Kansas who the Attorney General's office sued, and right now, there's some decisions saying, well, the Attorney General should have access to all those records, but in Kansas, Attorney General doesn't have access to your records because you're an independent agency. So that's just, I mean, it's not a little thing that Mark is talking to you about. It has a potential to be a really big thing.
And it's good for you to know that the agency's attorneys are, you know, spending significant time on that and that, so that they get, you know, get drawn into that. And I try to keep it, you know, on a minimal, but it does come up, flare up. The one connection, I made a reference earlier in my report that tied to the national conference, the point of that was that these are the kinds of things that are beneficial because all of the various states, they'll put a topic that is common to each state for discussion. Scott Gordon is going to that conference, and we have listservs and things like that. But because it's very timely, those are the kind of things that will be at least addressed during the national conferences. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. All right. We will act on Board Travel. Are there any changes, updates to Board Travel, Jim? And then, Dina?
I have an executive board meeting with Kentucky next week. Deborah has all the dates, so I won't bore you with that. And then in October, I'm covering for Betty to go to the migrant conference in Denver. Again, everything is paid for by somebody else. And then I will be going to the in-person ASDAQ and Green Bush meetings this month. And again, Deborah has all the dates.
Thank you, Jim. Dina?
I need to add a couple. September 24th, the Innovation Center at Auburn Washburn is being, I guess you could say there's a ribbon cutting, it's being opened. And October 11th, the Childhood Center at Garrett County is, they're having a groundbreaking, so.
Any other additions to Board Travel? Dennis?
Yeah, I did not make it to Great Bend. Had a personal family issue come up, so that'd be strike from my schedule. But I did go to help represent Ag in the Classroom, group that, out of K-State that was managing the booth there, which is a unique thing. If you get to the fair, go to the Pride of Kansas building, and they have a simulated farm, all the aspects of farming with seed and dairy. And the thing that really got my attention was, there was an older gentleman there that had, he was the first producer of cotton in the state down by Moscow, and him and another farmer got involved in raising cotton. They researched it all, and then they ended up building their own gin, cotton gin in that area, and co-opted with other farmers, and it was quite a story. It's really unique. And the interesting historical aspect of that was, you know, the Whitney cotton gin that we know historically was not actually invented by Whitney. He was a lawyer that actually patented the design that a farmer designed. So he got credit for that amazing piece of equipment. And so I just, you know, I really get into that kind of stuff because I just love the soil and what we, you know, it's a, and the families, the young families that come through there with their little kids, these kids are awed by all this, you know, they walk into this simulation of what it means to be under soil and all the bugs and everything that are in the soil. They see these big displays of it. So that was really worth my time. I spent close to three hours there with some of the other staff from K-State and their surrounding areas. So that would be Saturday, yeah, the 7th is, instead of going to Great Bend, so.
So Dennis, I'm going to put you on the spot to be a spokesperson for the fair. Doesn't it run for a few more days or is it over?
Yeah, it's through this coming Sunday yet.
Through Sunday? Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
Good opportunity to get out and see students.
Had some beautiful weather and was a large group there on Saturday because of the beautiful day we had.
Thank you. Jim?
November 7.
All right. Any, excuse me, I can't talk today. Any other changes, additions to Board Travel? If not, a motion to approve with all of the additions would be in order. Kathy? Is there a second? Jim? See, I just have to look the other way. All in favor, raise your hand. 10-0 unanimous, motion passes. Thank you. Committee reports, are there any committee reports? All right. I will talk real quick about the Blue Ribbon Task Force on Screen Time. I haven't figured out how to write the acronym yet because I think I say it differently every time I say it, but we are meeting on Zoom. There are 36 people in the group meeting on Zoom every Thursday from 4:00 to 5:30. You can find it on YouTube and follow along. And I just wanted to share with the Board that tomorrow's meeting, starting at 4:00, I think will be a good one to watch because we have, so this will be our fourth meeting tomorrow. The first two meetings dealt specifically with student devices, cell phones, watches, what have you. And so had some conversation around those. And then we've started to, we're going to progress through school-issued devices, and then kind of woven into the conversation, there are discussions about mental health, and we have breakout groups during the meeting. So we're trying to get a lot into an hour and a half, and a good way to make sure that everybody's voice is heard is to have breakout rooms on Zoom. And so they will, I say "they" because I'm not running this, I'm just a participant, but the folks from KSDE that are managing the meeting, and then we have a student and a superintendent who are chairing the meeting. And so it's been a lot of fun to watch them kind of work through the process. They will break us out into breakout rooms, and then you can have a conversation in a small group. Unfortunately, it's hard to broadcast, you can't broadcast all the groups on YouTube. And so the department has folks taking notes, and then tomorrow, the meeting will, during the meeting tomorrow, they will walk through some of the notes from the breakout groups. So it's a good way to kind of get a feel for what the different groups are talking about. They always mix us up, so I never see the same people twice in a small group from week to week, so that's kind of nice. And usually, there's a student in my group, so it's really nice to have that student voice, too. And Danny, if you want to add anything, Danny is also representing the Board on that, so. Okay? Yes, Dennis?
Just an interesting insert that came through the newspaper just in time for our task force. I just, this caught my attention, so I thought I'd just bring it as a.
Just in time for back-to-school season.
Back, yeah. Verizon is baiting our kids.
Those are some young kids on that ad. Yeah? Good spot, Dennis. All right. Yeah, Anne, go ahead.
I just have a request and kind of, Dennis is obviously enjoying work on the Ag Committee, and I love my committees, all of them. They're productive. We have, I mean, committee work, I think, is where you go to learn the stuff, you know, get to know what you don't know. And we also get a chance up close and personal to interact with key stakeholders from areas that, you know, people, they don't show up here. So we go out and we meet them, we get feedback, and it's all very valuable. But everybody's been here at least almost two years now, and it might be time, maybe, to look at the list of committees we have, and if you're on one that's not performing or is not valuable, maybe we need to know that, or if it's really, really good to know that, too, so.
Okay. Duly noted. We can probably pick that up. Kathy?
I just wanted to comment on the Screen Time thing. I did just, did watch the last meeting, and I guess I was surprised that the school counselors that we were hearing from were elementary level instead of a secondary level. So just a comment on my part, because I thought we were looking more at the older kids in the high school, more age range, middle school, high school. And so it would be nice to hear from those who are working in those arenas. So just a thought, just a comment.
Yeah, appreciate that. I have heard some feedback from the folks that are doing the organizing that because we've compressed this and are trying to make it happen pretty quickly, I'm trying to wrap it by the end of October, I believe, it's been hard to get all of the people that they wanted in that time slot, especially, you know, at the school district level. But I'll definitely pass that along again. Yeah, thanks. All right. Any other comments on Screen Time or requests for future agenda items? All right. You guys are ready to go, huh? So it's 10:45. Commissioner?
So we are good to go at Kansas Health Institute at 12:30, which will get you out earlier. I, Deborah did her magic, and I contacted Dr. Meckel, and he said, yes, he can make it. So if you want to shorten the time then, and at 12:30, if you could be over across the street, Kansas Health Institute, we will start then and have you out at 2:30 so you can get home, or to the fair, or wherever you're headed. A grandchildren.
And that is an open meeting? It will not be on YouTube because that would be very hard to listen to.
Right. Thank you. That is, it is an open meeting, but the reason we can't livestream, we can livestream it, the people that would watch would hear only chaos because of the small group going on at the same time, so they would be frustrated. So you have to appear in person for the retreat.
And Michelle will be appearing via a computer, which will move around the room, so.
Michelle, we tried to get you, you know, like a head on a robot, you know, but we weren't that sophisticated, so I think we'll just carry you around on a laptop.
All right. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned. We will see you in October.
weren't that sophisticated, so I think we'll just carry you around on a laptop.
All right. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned. We will see you in October.